If you could lead it from the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence for the men and women in the armed forces. Thank you.
Cindy Davis, please. Good evening, Cindy Davis, Park Lane West. Couple of things here, I'll read what I wrote, and then I have some other questions, too. To begin, "I come before the council as a citizen seeking fiduciary accountability within our municipal government, within the municipal budget and governance. Ms. Attorney Grimes, I previously asked for a municipal government workshop, and Mayor Bass, you had said it was in the works, so now I'm asking, are there dates when it's going to happen? So, I know where we are in that process. This is about the budget. In consideration of the budgetary restraints, the approval of $4,000 salary increase, Mr. Mayor Bass, I don't think it's prudent, in consideration of the massive cuts that have been made to police, fire, social services. The town council's approval of the mayor's budget does not demonstrate fiscal diligence in consideration of what the constraints are that are being faced to the town. In another community, an official took a cut. So, I'm addressing that. This is your first term in office, and knowing what the budget is, I don't think it was a wise move. The funding of the $150,000 to the children's center in lieu of the cuts to all the other agencies seems like it's another example of fiduciary misdirection. I was trying to understand the budget, looking at all the line items and everything, and someone tried to explain it to me as well, but the way that this children's center is listed, it's listed as a line item, it doesn't list the grants and all the monies that are supposedly coming, and it just lists the $150,000. Again, I'm new to this, and I need a lot of instruction and understanding. My major concern for me is the ECS. The ECS is our state dollars for education. It's appropriated for education. Now, again, looking at the budget, knowing I'm a newbie, the biggest, when looking at the budget, it's listed, the biggest revenue is the town budget. Then, the second is the Board of Education. So, the Board of Education is listed as a revenue. I don't understand that. That's confusing to me, but in the 1.5 million ECS dollars, I am incredibly dismayed that the monies were not given to the school. Those are monies for the school. So, you're not appropriate, it's, knowing I'm new, but those, the ECS monies are for the school. So, this goes into budget allocations, which tax revenue is 81 million, and then the Board of Ed is 11 million, and then the last is financing grants. So, why the Board of Ed budget is listed as a revenue does not make sense to me. Okay, the Board of Ed does not generate revenue. So, another state, another, I would like each member of the council to publicly state what their position is on the budget. We need to, I need to hear from you, I need to know where you stand. You've made, you've done the budget, but where, really, where are you?
Cindy, you have a minute, please.
The referendums. Each referendum cost $13,750. The second referendum is coming up, it's a cost of $27,500. Those monies would be better spent to support the agencies that you have, that have been cut. Let me see, Lisa Hyde, when you talk of, when, I don't understand what metrics are, so at some point in time, can you explain to me, when you talk metrics, what's that, what that means? And let's see if I can find, the loss of funds for the agencies is very disturbing, there's one individual who works without a salary. Lots of things are not right.
Cindy, you're over to the minute, if you would like to speak. Why not everybody has spoken, I'll bring you back.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Julie Larson, please.
Good evening, it's Larson, for the record, like King Lear, English major joke. Anywho, I'm here tonight because I was reminded of something said by Councilwoman Frances last year, when she was asking the previous mayor to "think" before presenting proposals. Think is an acronym that stands for Is It Thoughtful? Is It Helpful? Is It Informed? Is It Necessary? And Is It Kind? And I feel compelled to ask this of this body tonight regarding this year's budget. Now, I'm not here to bash you and criticize choices that were made, because I know budgeting is hard. I spent my life, my working professional life, in the nonprofit sector, and I know that resources are limited. But on the surface, and the public perception, is that the allocation of resources with this new referendum seems destined to force voters and taxpayers to choose a side, to be either on Team Town or on Team Board of Ed. And honestly, a casual glance at the headlines or the explanations of the new budget and the bottom line, it doesn't communicate the changes that have come from the state. That provides more funding to both the school system, while saving the taxpayer money and reducing the draw from our savings, and provides a little bit more money to the town side of the budget. And so, people are puzzled. People are puzzled that with half a million dollars more from the state than on the 15th, the VNA, the Water Witch Hose Company, and the youth agency are being underfunded for their request. And I remain puzzled on this myself. I just feel as though we heard some of these arguments about funding those same lines last year, with different people taking different sides of the issue. So, I'm puzzled as to how this decision was reached this year. I feel that the key to this is good communication. I feel that the leadership in town needs to communicate why the choices were made, and why they made the decisions that they did, and how this helps every single citizen in this town, whether they are a first grader, or a 10th grader, or a person who needs the VNA, or a person who might need to call upon the fire department. Good leadership unites us, it informs us, and it cares for all of us. And I'll remind you that this administration ran on a campaign promise of pulling together. I do worry that with this current referendum and the lack of outreach from leadership, that many taxpayers are feeling like you're yanking our chains. Thank you.
Julie, before you go, can you state your name for the record, your address for the record, please?
Ray Griffin.
Thank you, Julie. Jeff Winter, please.
Good evening, Jeff Winter, 22 Maury Road. Actually, I think it was very interesting that Julie brought up the concept of "think", and I remember that very well from last year. And it's not so much, as she also said, it's not really the choices that have or haven't been made, allocations that have gone one way or the other, but if you, if you actually believed that you thought, or you put "think" into the way you put together your budget just a week ago, isn't it time to stand behind that, to show that you have "think", and you did "think", and you thought about the others? It's time to take the stand. It's not time to just sit back and say, "Let the voters decide," because they will, but it's time for you to stand up, because you ran for office for a reason. You ran to office to be a leader, and leaders need to tell the other folks in town whether they believe in their own work or not. Silence essentially says, "I don't really believe in what I did." If you say "no," that's fine, let us know. But if you believe in it, it was your work, stand up for it. You don't have to stick it all the way up, but you know, you can stick it up just a little bit. But I think there should be some statement from this body tonight, one week from next week's resolution, from everyone at this table, excluding the town attorney, of course. But I think it's important, and it's time, it's time to lead. Your choice will tell us a lot about whether you actually thought or put "think" into the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Cindy, did you want to come back?
Not now.
I do not have your name on the list, sir. Did you want to come back?
No.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, that's the end of the list.
And Mr. Mullin, did he sign up?
He did not, sir.
Next, I'd like to do the approval of the regular town council meeting minutes of May 14th, 2018. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Do you have a second?
Do somebody have a second?
Tom, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. If I could just take a moment of the council's time. As we all know, we had a major storm event on the 15th of May, and we had some very key people, and key responders that helped the town and the community with that. So, I'd like to have Fire Marshal Ryan Omen come up.
Ryan is also the head of our emergency operations team, and Ryan, I'd like to offer this certificate of recognition. Town of New Milford would like to recognize Fire Marshal, Emergency Management Director Ryan Omen, for his work during the severe weather event on May 15, 2018. His diligent effort to ensure the safety and well-being of the town residents was outstanding, and thank you for all that you do for our community. This is what makes New Milford such a special place, you're very proud.
Some of our first responders couldn't be here tonight, but Lieutenant Capella, would you come up for a moment?
Certificate of recognition awarded to the New Milford Police Department. Town of New Milford would like to recognize the New Milford Police Department for their work during the following severe weather event on May 15, 2018. Three departments' efforts and long hours to ensure the safety of town residents was outstanding, and we could not have made it through without your assistance. This is what makes New Milford such a special place, and thank you for your job well done.
And some of the other first responders we'll bring up at the next meeting. Uh, Mr. Hannan, you're here, I see you. I'm gonna have you come up for Public Works.
Some, for record, are Public Works. Town of New Milford would like to recognize Department of Public Works for their work during the following severe weather event on May 15, 2018. Your diligent efforts and long hours to ensure the safety of our town residents was outstanding, and we could not have made it without your assistance. This is what makes New Milford a special place, and we cannot thank you enough for everything that the Department has done.
And the next ones will bring at the next meeting, because some could not attend. Next, I'd like to do mayor's remarks. First, I'd like to thank Mr. Jim Delancy, and Mr. Jeff McBriarty, and the Veterans Committee for their outstanding efforts in this year's Memorial Day Parade. It was a wonderful time had by our residents and our community, and I thank them for what they do each and every year, not only for the Memorial Day Parade, but for what they do for our veteran community at large, day in and day out. I'd also like to thank Herb Furman and the Gaylardsville Fire Department for all of their efforts for the Gaylardsville Parade, which was also a wonderful event, showed our community spirit, our community pride in what we do, so I thank them as well. As I just spoke a minute ago, I'd also like to thank all of our first responders, all of our community that helped, and everyone that made the difference after this storm event. For Southern New Milford, that included downed trees, power outages, some damage to homes and to vehicles. If it wasn't for our first responders, to their immediate assistance, it would have been much worse, so I can only thank them so much for all that they did, and they continue to do. I'd also like to thank our regular volunteers, our CERT team that manned the places where we get water at the MACS, the Food, the Culinary Institute. We had Joe Salon offering free haircuts. We had the Bank Street Movie Theater offering free movies. We had lots of residents helping and offering, and that's what makes this town so special, is in doing that, we helped our fellow citizen, and that's what makes this town so special. And I can only thank everyone so much for their efforts. Also, Eversource, they had lots and lots, and still do, downed poles, downed wires, and they brought in additional crews to help us here in New Milford, so that we could get our students back in time, so they didn't have to go to school on the weekends or Memorial Day to finish up their school year. So, I can only thank them as well. Next, just kind of a couple of updates for us and for the community. First, I was very happy that we, as a town, were able to host the Commercial Realtors Association Breakfast on 517 at The Makery with Tony Van Grove. And what that is, is we have the business realtors community, the brokers that actually go out and show investors and show future landowners opportunities to either build or bring businesses to town. So, I was with Kathy Castaneda, we went and talked about New Milford, and how we can provide a place for them, that we're open for business, and we would gladly help them in any way that they could, as long as they kept the rural character of our town, kept our identity, we definitely would love for them to invest here in New Milford. They were very excited to be up here, to talk to us, they're very happy with our Department Services team, and I will continue to update you, because we're gonna have another event with them in the fall. Also, we had a meeting last week, actually two meetings, with a company called SFA, and basically, it's a very initial first step in a meeting, kind of putting our toes in the water. And what SFA does is they do events, and they do athletic fields, or stadiums, or multipurpose opportunities. So, we spoke with their CEO, and his name was Dev Pathic, and he came and he talked to us about what could be an opportunity. Walter was there, what may not, what may or may not be, but I just wanted to apprise the town and the town council that we did have them come here and begin some talks about what may or may not be something that could happen. One of the things could be, if we could bring in some live acts, from, instead of going from Mohican down to New York City, maybe they can stop here. Opportunity to bring some additional economic development, which then in turn could maybe bring some hotels, maybe bring some opportunities. Don't know where this is all gonna lead, but I wanted to let you guys know first that it's something that we're looking to explore, and I will bring that forward to you with more of an update. I did receive from Mayor Furman the PowerPoint that was presented, I will be sending that to you, and also gonna be putting it on our website, so that you can see it and review. Next, I'd like to talk about the roads. As you know, we did our bond for that. We had the DPW send some of the designs and specs to our road committee. The road committee has made a few revisions, so those revisions are being done and being brought back to the road committee, and then I will be bringing back an update. I did tell Department of Public Works, as well as our vendors, that we are gonna do this with a long-term strategy in mind. We're not gonna be building roads with a short lifespan, we're gonna be building roads the right way, with a long-term plan and a long-term lifespan, so that we can maximize the use of our bond dollars. Next, just like to update the committee, I was happy to attend the Nagatuck Valley Community College commencement, it was wonderful to see some New Milford residents there. And also, would just like to say to all of the other New Milford residents that have graduated or have their children graduate this year, congratulations, blessings, and continued success. And lastly, we talk about the budget process. So, I just wanted to be clear to those that are in the audience tonight, and also watching on our live stream. Our budget referendum will be Tuesday, June 5th, from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. So, just so those, 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., sorry. On a ballot, for those that aren't too sure, there is your first question, which is, shall the sum of $38,184,316 be appropriated as the annual town government budget for the year 2018-2019? You have an opportunity to choose yes, you have an opportunity to choose no. Your choice. Question two, shall the sum of $63,310,586 be appropriated as the annual Board of Education budget for the year 2018-2019 fiscal year? You can check yes, you can check no. It's your personal decision to choose what you feel is best for the town of New Milford, not someone else telling you what to do. Now, we go to the non-binding questions, which is very important. So, question three, if the budget is defeated, do you wish to see the amount of $38,184,316 for the general town government increased? You have the opportunity to check yes, or the opportunity to check no. Question four, if the budget is defeated, do you wish to see the amount of $63,310,586 for the education increase? You can check yes, you can check no. The reason why I bring this up is these are all advisory questions that will mean something to this town council when the budget comes back, either in the affirmative or the negative. So, I think it is important that we know that. Voters are gonna vote in the following districts. District one, that's Northville School on Hip Road. District two, that's the Lilis Building on East Street. District three, Oddfellows Lodge, Danbury Road. District four, Gaylardsville Fire Department. District five, Scaticoke on Hip Road. District six, Hill and Plain School. District seven, Serenoble School. Absentee ballots can be found at the town's clerk's office. For those that don't know where that is, it's downstairs, right here on 10 Main Street. Property owners are also eligible to vote pursuant to the Connecticut General statute, and they will vote in the Lilis Building. If anybody has any questions, please feel free to contact my office, 860-355-6010. If you need a ride to the polls, you can call our office, 860-355-6010. There's information that's on our town website, you can go to www.nu milford.org, go to the Budget tab, click Budget, and you will see all of the budgets that are there for you to look, and if you have any questions, please feel free to call the office. Lastly, there was a mention made about the mayor's salary, and about an increase in the mayor's salary. Actually, that's incorrect. Actually, the difference is, the pension, the pension monies I did not take, so in lieu of pension, that's the increase. Now, if I was gonna take what the former administration approved for an increase, I would have a pretty hefty increase. I chose not to, because the town itself, we had to lay some people off. So, I just wanted to put that on the record, so that everyone can be clear on that. I thank everybody, I'd like to move now on to number six, the Bike and Trail Committee, for those that don't know, that's going to be rescheduled for our June 11th meeting, where Malone and McBroom will be presenting, along with the Bike and Trail Committee, an update on the River Trail and Bike Trail. Next, I'd like to move to the Police Department.
I'd like to move to accept a request from the Milford Police Department for permission to accept a donation for two K9 GPS collars from Bazuto's and All American, All American Waste, I assume that is. Each collar has a value of up to $1,000.
Second.
Do we have someone here?
Lieutenant Capella's here. Lieutenant?
I have a question or two on this. So, thanks for having me. I'm happy to report that being in public service my whole life, going on 26 years now, I've been to meetings like this before, I know it's, with budgets, it's the same pretty much everywhere. I worked for the State Police for 22 years, and I was always very, you know, creative to find money, and I saw a value for these collars, so I just want to appreciate the town councils taking my time to listen to this and actually accept them. They are very expensive, I'll just show you quickly what they look like, the value these are, that we recently had a missing kid in town, and what happened was, we sent all of our dog handlers, we were very fortunate to have two of them, they're highly trained handlers and dogs, we have this vast expansive, this is the largest town geographically in the state of Connecticut, a lot of it's dense woodland, so you're gonna see, when I explain this to you, the value of this, once we tracked for where this guy might have been, and we exhausted that day's work, what we had to do was, kind of go old school, I had to print off a map from Google, and go through the whole thing with the dog handler, and say, where exactly did you go with your dogs, so the next time we have to go out and look for this guy, or if we bring dogs from adjoining towns to work collaborative with us, we'd have to do it by hand, and we'd have to be close, right? With this mechanism here, it's gonna be exacting, so that when they put this on the dog, this goes on the handler, so he knows where he is on the planet, he can see where the dog is, it's live, and it also archives it. And so, now we go back the next day, we know exactly where we've looked, we could look somewhere else, and if we want to work with other dog teams, we could see where each other went. So, then I just want to throw some props out to Bazuto's and All American Waste, I'll just tell you that Bazuto's, I used them once before, I was the crime scene commander for Sandy Hook, and right after, at that time, right after that was over, this is where I first learned of Bazuto's, they called me and asked if there was any equipment that we needed or that we were lacking, and of course, like I said before, the state funding is always, you know, it's always in a state of flux, and difficult to come by, everyone is competing, has competing interests, so they said, you know, what do you need? And they were phenomenal. So, I reached out to them, I said, hey, we need these dog collars, can you guys, you know, help us out? Immediately, they bought us two collars. So, I just want to throw, and one of the things they do is, Bazuto's benevolent corporation is the Hometown Foundation, and what they're, this is something recent, what they try to do is marry up benevolent persons- persons in the community with the people that need it. So there might have been a time where, in this case, All American Waste, Ken Valera stepped up, their company is down on Danbury Road, he stepped up to pay the balance for this. We got him at cost, but they actually, you know, funded it. In the past, Bezuto's would just give us the money and they would worry about getting donations from these various people in the future. What they did in this case there is they reached out to their various benevolent businessmen and said, hey, New Milford is looking for these collars, does anyone want to donate directly to them? And, you know, through the Hometown Foundation, but directly to them, and All American Waste stepped up to the plate. They were great, and so was Bezuto's. And so that's the story. Thank you very much for your time.
So the dog has the collar on. I'm just curious, does that collar have an elastic so that if he got caught on a tree or something, he could get out of it?
Breakaway?
Yeah.
No, it does not. That's a fair question, but we can find the dog.
Well, that's what, that was the next thing. What's the range of your ability to find the dog?
Well, not even highly technical. I know it's, this is one of the premier collars you could possibly buy. This is the, sort of the gold standard. I don't know the exact distance, but I know it's wide-ranging. The second part, this has many accoutrements to it. One of it is, it has a vibration sensor. So, you know, dogs, when they, I'm a former dog manager, so that's why I kind of like these, our animals. But one of the things a dog does is alert to whatever it does, whether it's a cadaver dog, a drug dog, whatever its utility is. So if the dog barks, let's say he's hung up in a tree, to your fair question, this is going to pick up the dog's barking. To the handler, it could mean that the dog is in need of rescue, or he's alerting that he found somebody, or...
Are these the first two, or you have others already?
These are the first two.
Oh, first two? Oh, I'd love to know how it works.
Okay.
I mean, when you'd use it, when you'd take a dog out with it. I don't need to know what he was looking for, but, thanks.
Probably go woof.
Yep. Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Lieutenant. Next, Finance Office update from the Grants and Compliance Specialist, Tammy.
Good evening, everybody. I'm going to hand out, I'm not going to read it to you, I promise. I'll just follow along with you a little bit. So, good evening. Thank you for having me here this evening. My name is Tammy Reardon. I'm the Grants and Compliance Specialist for the town of New Milford. I've been on the job for about 90 days now, and it's been a fast and furious 90 days, a couple of points particularly fast and furious, depending upon what activities I was working on. But I have focused my efforts during the past couple of months at re-establishing some of the contacts I had in my previous experience as a municipal employee. That was very helpful. I've been meeting with department heads, talking with them about what their current and their future needs are for their departments and for where they need to go, based on the input that they've received from you guys. I've been reviewing our current funding. We do have some grants that are already in-house, that are working on projects, and I need to ensure that those grants are staying within compliance, so that we have opportunities in the future to once again apply for funding should that need arise. I've also, of course, you're excited about researching and identifying some funding opportunities. I know that's what everybody really wants to hear. So I've been focusing a large portion of my time doing that, because as you know, this is a new position. So I had to rely on myself, my skill sets, my previous knowledge, and my previous contacts to develop some funding sources and to source things out. There was an empty desk and an empty file cabinet that I walked into. So there was, unlike many positions, as personnel changes, you can pick up where the last person left off. That certainly was not the case for this position. So it did take me some time, but I am very proud to say that I've identified over $2.7 million worth of grant and funding opportunities available to the town over the next 12 months. I have some other opportunities that extend beyond those 12 months, but at some point we need to work on a reasonable cycle and work within the department needs, as well as the preparations that the departments have made for those grant opportunities. Applications, I've submitted $464,000, a little more than that, in applications, and that's both competitive funding and non-competitive funding. Of that, we have produced over $401,000 that has come back to the town. So that leaves us about $61,000 and change, that's outstanding. Some of those I'll hear about hopefully by the end of June, others will be coming shortly after at a later date. With those applications, if you have any questions about that in particular, I'd be glad to answer those, and then I can talk about some of the compliance pieces that I've been working on.
Sounds good.
Ms. Heda?
Yes. So, on the $2 million, I'm going to round it to 8.8.
Sure. Thank you.
Roughly, what percent is new and what percent was existing?
Of that, that I've discovered, because some of these grants, when I refer to them as new, I'm thinking of them as new in the past four to five years.
Okay.
Okay. So I would say, based on my records...
I'm thinking of the last 12 months. Sorry to interrupt. I'm thinking, what's new new in the last 12 months that we didn't have on the books before, and now it's really going to help as we struggle with the budget? If you don't have it, that's fine, you can get it to me later.
I can get that to you, the exact figure, but it is approximately $400,000 that is not new. The rest of it is new funding that I've found.
Okay. So 2.4. And about what time, because compliance is a big issue, it takes a lot of time.
It absolutely is.
When you look at your time and what you've had to spend it, about what time, percent of your time is getting taken up by compliance versus being able to hunt down the new stuff? I don't have to be exact.
I think over the past 90 days, because some of this is ramping up and sort of settling into the position, I've split my time between meeting with the department heads and determining their needs and their future goals and needs, the research and identification, as well as the compliance piece. I would say I'm probably splitting that up about 30% in each of those categories. Thank you.
Any other questions? Walter?
Tammy, I like your comment here about what's coming up, and if we can bite any of that off. AARP, $250,000, and these other programs, anywhere from 500 to 600, if we can bite any of that off. Keep working on it, keep working on it.
Thank you.
That would be phenomenal.
Councilman Baer has flipped to the second part, the second page of sort of what's coming up. One of the things I do want to share with you is, of those applications and the value of $464,000 and change, $351,000 of that is low SIP money that is coming back to us from the state. That is a non-competitive grant, but it does require pretty extensive paperwork be compiled and submitted based on capital improvement projects we've done during the current budget cycle. And you have to provide the state with all of the details, the invoicing, the invoice number, the check, the check number, the amount, all of that information. That is about $351,000. I've spoke to the Finance Office, we had not heard back from the state. I put a call out to the state earlier this afternoon, and we will have that money in our accounts by the 11th of June. They have assured me of that, so. I know the Finance Director was here at your last meeting, and I believe part of his concern was that we hadn't received those funds yet, so I wanted to get an update for you before I came here today.
So that, is that in addition to the 2.8 you talked about up above?
That is included in.
Okay.
That is included in. It would be nice if it was in addition to.
Sorry, I can't read.
But the compliance piece, I'll talk to you a little bit about that. The compliance piece, that low SIP paperwork that I was just talking about, took extensive amount of time getting that information together for the state. Now granted, if I wasn't in place, somebody would be doing it, yes, absolutely. But you shouldn't be paying a Finance Director to be going through and producing that information for something like that. He has more important things, particularly the budget, to worry about than getting the reimbursement paperwork to the state and going through countless files and paperwork. The other compliance piece that I've been working on is the steep grant that is used for the Richmond Center, the senior center expansion. That construction is almost completed. I think we're going to be looked upon very favorably by OPM for that steep grant, because not only is the project, as far as the steep funding is concerned, because the project had come in over budget, the town's portion of that project cost was produced over the past two years for that project to move forward. So making sure that all of that is still within compliance. The Wellsville Avenue Bridge replacement, again, it's not a competitive grant necessarily, that was done under the bridge program that we're eligible for, but it is important to maintain the compliance piece for all of those financials as we move forward, so that the funding entity looks favorably upon us, so that we can get funds in the future. And that will bring me to some of the thing of what's coming up. The AARP, as Councilman Baer just mentioned, I've been working with Senior Center Director Carolyn Haglen for that. They just announced a really amazing program that could provide us a quarter million dollars, but it's very specific to innovations in nutritional programs and services. So, one of the thing that's important that you should know is that a lot of the funding that I'm finding out there is geared towards the senior population. The senior population in the state of Connecticut is expanding. The senior population here in the town of New Milford is growing and expanding. Anybody that has paid attention over the past couple of years when Ms. Haglen has spoken, she will confirm that, and I'm finding that that information is very much the case here in New Milford as well. So, a lot of funding for seniors. Our seniors have a variety of meal and nutritional options. So I want to explore to see if there's something we can do for them that's even better, and utilize the funding to be able to do it. That's a great one. There are some federal programs that I'm going to be meeting with WestCog later this week to talk about, to see if they are opportunities for the town and for us to move forward on. One of them is a transportation program. It used to be referred to as a Tiger Grant, which is infrastructure. So that's roads, that's very important. That's roads and bridges and infrastructure pieces. I will certainly let you know how that meeting goes and if I'm going to be moving forward with those opportunities. Small Cities Funds, nothing that you shouldn't be familiar with, those opportunities, if that opens up later this year, can range anywhere from a half a million to $700,000, and I've stayed in contact with that. Their focus currently is community housing, senior housing, housing rehabilitation, but they also provide an opportunity for ADA compliance for municipal buildings.
Any questions?
Senior Citizen Council, can you do it?
There's some money for that.
I can look into that.
Thank you.
Katie?
Tammy?
Yes.
Job well done in 90 days.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the report.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Tammy.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Good job.
Okay. Item B, under item A, eight. Move to transfer funds of $5,000 from contingency fund to cover the refunds and rebates through June 30th, 2018. The balance in tax rebates and refunds is $4,930.89 before the May and June Town Council requests for refunds. The tax collector has submitted $1,829.94 for the May meeting, and estimates at least $5,872.91 for June, which does not include any requests that may be submitted in May and June. These refund requests are all motor vehicle prorated requested, prorates requested by leasing companies as required according to State Statute 1260 and 12129.
Second.
We would be moving from the contingency fund 1098000, object 58900. To tax rebates and refunds, Fund 10413700, object 59500.
Second. Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item nine, ordinances. I'd like to move to approve the repeal of ordinance, Chapter two, Article two, Division three, comptroller, from the Code of Ordinances.
Second. And this was pursuant to our...
Public hearing.
Yep, public hearing, prior to this Town Council meeting. Do I have a second and a motion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item nine B, move to approve the repeal of ordinance, Chapter 17, Article one, Board of Commissioners from the Code of Ordinances.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next, brief discussion regarding capital expenditures. So as we continue to move on, we've been talking with the Board of Education concerning combining some capital requirements, capital needs, together to see by joint purchasing, can we discover some economies of scale. One of the oil tanks needs to be done sooner rather than later for the school. That's the Hill and Plain School. And speaking with Kevin Moret, their facilities manager, this is something that needs to get done now. It's an eight to 10-week lag time to order the, and get the oil tank. So they want to have this in before the start of the fall school year. So they have decided to go ahead and bid out that particular project. We're going to be working on seeing the opportunities of combining the needs for Town Hall, theirs for Northville, as an opportunity to joint purchase, also to look at joint purchasing roofs. So there's going to need a roof, going to be needed on Serenoble, Town Hall here, and also some work to be done on Northville. So we're getting some estimates together, both together and separate, see which is more beneficial. Obviously, with the more square footage, when you're talking about roof replacement and roof work, the cheaper the price will be. Once I get all that, I'll re-update the Town Council and the public, and I'll let you know where we are with that. Next is B, which is a Bike and Trail Committee. I've spoken to the Bike and Trail Committee, we are postponing that. We are actually going to be revisiting that at our June 11th meeting, where Malone and McBroom will be here to also present the final renderings for the Bike and River Walk. So obviously, the Bike and the whole thing, number 11, will be moved to June 11th meeting as well. And I'd like to entertain a...
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add executive session for discussion of a pending claim.
Second. Any discussion to go into executive session? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
And does anybody have anything else?
Okay, so we're back in regular session on executive session. There were no motions made, no votes were taken.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Mayor.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you.